Okay, good morning, everyone. Be calling this work session for July ninth, twenty twenty four to order. If you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag, state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public, which is that one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag, the state of New Mexico. As a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is gonna be approval of the work session agenda.
So move.
Second. So have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to purpose and public input, do we have anyone for public input? Anyone for public input? Okay. Okay, no one for public input, moving on to presentations. First presentation is gonna be a special school, school bond election. Mister Hawkins from Silver Consolidated Schools.
Good morning, county commissioners and. Good morning, county commissioners and community, thank you for having me back. I will endeavor to, not necessarily speed through my presentation, because I know your time is precious, but deliberately go through this and at times pause, look in your general direction to see if you have questions. Please do not hesitate to stop me, because I wanna make sure that I answer all your questions thoroughly and likewise, the question that you may have that you may be hearing from the community. First and foremost, I think it goes without saying, I came to you this past spring and I presented to you on the state of our facilities and I state, in the state of the schools finances as a preface to understand what we were about to undertake with our facilities master plan committee. Every five years, every school district is required by the state of New Mexico to complete a facilities master plan. The purpose of this is to evaluate the state of your schools, your campuses, your, anything that's in the name of the schools. Age it, conditions, needs, everything, priorities of the community, the whole line. From that process, you develop that plan and that allows you access to capital outlay dollars as well as different funding sources from the federal government if you apply for grants. Most public entities have some type of facilities master plan. And so I am back now with the presenting to the community and to you as a reflection of that development of the next five year facilities master plan. First and foremost, I'm gonna draw your attention to the fact that Silver Consolidated Schools has approximately sixty-three million dollars worth of deferred maintenance needs. And when I talk about this presentation and I refer back to it, I'll refer to those maintenance needs and where they come from and how they're, they, they come about. We have an opportunity with the Public Schools Capital Outlay Council to gain access to a significant percentage of dollars to address the cost for our needs. It's a short window, it started last year, it ends at the end of next year, it's a three-year window. And that's what really prompted besides the needs of this, this process to go forward and to have a conversation with our community. The facilities master plan in itself focuses on creating a map of success for silver schools, prioritizing capital needs, addressing the functional needs of the school, being very practical throughout the district, using our data, both the data from the school as well as Grant County and New Mexico, reflectively looking at the trends, whether they be enrollment, whether they be just any of those issues, as well as what our community goals are. If you're interested in looking at the presentations that were done for the facilities master plan committee and, and the conversations that they had, you can go to Silver Schools website and click on Silver Schools Wiki right here and it looks just like this, facilities master plan, and you can see all the PowerPoint, all the presentations and all the members of the community. The facilities master plan committee was comprised of approximately fifty folks. These were teachers, these were parents, these were leaders in the community like Priscilla Lucero Legislature, like Representative Torasis, the Lieutenant Governor. We had a variety of people representing our community, giving feedback as Capital AE came through and walked us through this process. High-level focal points, key things to keep in mind. At the end of the process, it was determined through the data and through that work that there were several points that the committee wanted to make sure during these next seven years, we did well. Said seven, five here, seven points. First up, facility improvements, we've gotta address the needs of the district. We've got sixty-two point six, sixty-three million dollars worth of preferred maintenance. We wanna continue to grow our CTE college career programs. Silver High School and Cliff High School has the Innovation Zone Grant. We've qualified for it for the last three years, which allows our students at the high school to do internships, work-based learning, really get into community and really look at what are their alternatives, if they're not gonna go into the military, if they're not gonna go into the college, college area, what experiences can they gain to be ready for immediate employment? The community definitely wants to see us there. Professional development and staff retention, making sure that our teachers have the most skills they need and the best skills for our students today. Technology, we all know that technology continues to be in need as it continues to evolve. They wanna make sure that we stay current there. They also really took a hard look at our changing demographics. Depending on time, I'll be able to talk with you more about that and the impact that that's had on Silver Schools and on Grant County. They also valued community partnerships. The reality is Silver Schools really prides itself in reaching out and connecting with different entities and making sure they have opportunities to educate our students on the resources here in our community and our parents, whether it's Freeport and their generous donations and support in our schools, or working with Western in our dual credit program, continuing to foster those partnerships is crucial. Finally, addressing legislative issues. The reality is the needs of rural New Mexico, like Silver Schools, is completely different than the needs of Los Cruces in Albuquerque. Now, we saw the hundred-and-eighty-day rule and how it impacted the state as a whole. Just recently, there was a huge impact on transportation in an effort for, by the legislature to fix the needs of transportation needs in Albuquerque. Hobbs, Gallup, they, they were losing millions of dollars a year out of their operations because they weren't subsidized sufficiently through the funds. The legislature attempted to fix that by removing the density factor. But when they did that, they inadvertently took thousands of dollars from rural schools. Silver Schools saw a three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar deduction. Animus saw, I think, almost an eighty-thousand-dollar deduction, right? Colbert saw a deduction, your rural schools got hit significantly. But your higher density populations saw those gains. So it's important for school districts like ours to continue to advocate when things like that happen so that the legislature knows the impact of their decisions. So I'm gonna talk to, talk with you about facilities inventory, our finances, enrollment trends if we have time, and our capital utilization. First and foremost, the purpose of this slide, if you're down here, it's probably hard to see some of the data, but what I want you to understand is Capital AE came in and they did a deep dive of our data, right? They looked at everything, they look at the age of our schools, they look at the enrollment, they look at the time that they open, they look at the renovation periods. They look at the facility needs, capital needs. If you looked down at the bottom there, you can see where it points out to our sixty-two point six, sixty-three million dollar needs. You can even see the replacement value. Grant County Silver Schools has five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of school facilities in your community. Five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars if you were gonna replace all of those buildings, which is an interesting estimation of cost, right? If you look at the total square footage of our buildings, six-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-three square footage of building, right? That's eight building, that's eight schools, right? Each of those campuses have multiple roofs and spaces. As we talk about our, our capacity later and as we talk about what we're maintaining, I want you to realize we've got a lot of footage. That doesn't include Foxfield, it doesn't include Ben Altamorano space as well, right? So we cover a lot of ground. When the facilities master plan was completed, they, and they started to look at all the costs of all the renovations. You can see here a color kind of combination of all the different needs, right? You've got approximately eight million dollars for roofs, you've got seven million for the flooring, you've got three million parking lots, you, you, you see, you see plumbing, you see heating and air conditioning. There is a variety of different needs in the schools. One of the things that happens first is the, the facility master plan takes this and they prioritize it. Priority one, two, three, four, and five. How do they determine that? Well, they look at those issues that have a high probability of failure and have a high probability of impacting the learning environment. So they take all that data and they shift it, and these are the number ones, these are the number twos, these are the number threes, and they go on. So what makes a priority one need? Well, roofs. If your roof collapses, you can't have school, right? Just as simple as that. Now, we're pretty much annually repairing or replacing roofs at Silver Schools. I had someone ask me the other day, oh, I thought you guys already replaced that roof at Cliff. We replaced a roof at Cliff, but there's like six different buildings there. You go over to Silver High School, even though it's one campus, there are multiple roofs, roofs spread out all over that campus. And so when we take on projects, unfortunately, we can't do the whole entire expanse of a whole facility. We typically have to take on the sections of the project that we can. Currently, you can see the state of some of the, some of the roofs that we have right now. Cliff Schools, Harrison Schmidt, and one of Silver High School's roofs. La Plata. You can also see in the middle picture Cliff Schools, you can see where water intrusion has already started to, or not already, has been impacting certain aspects of their buildings. Water intrusion is a big issue that happens when you have roofs that leak, right? So you can see the over at Sixth Street, the damage to the fire alarm system in that, in that section. And it still works, there's not a problem, but you can see the impact of water damage coming in on that wall. All total, we have seven-point-two million dollars of priority one needs at Silver Schools, right? If you look at this list, you'll see that most of those needs are roofs, emergency lighting, right? And in some cases, drainage, waste, and vent. But seven-point-two million. When you look at a priority two need, again, it doesn't have the same urgency as a priority one, but if this fails or if this has a huge issue, it could impact learning. So you can look at La Plata and you can see the exterior wall, you're probably going, well, see outside of the wall. But what's on the other side of that wall? And does that allow for water and other weathering to impact that space? You can see Cliff Schools and many of our campuses have exhaust fan issues. They're dated, they need to be updated and replaced. Harrison Schmidt, so this is an interesting fact that I was not really totally aware of, but I've got to learn a lot more, I'm not the maintenance guy. I was an English and history teacher, so if you called me and asked to come do some maintenance repairs, now I can grab some duct tape and super glue and we'll see what we can do. But the vast majority of our maintenance department, they're the experts. And so I've learned a lot as I've developed this part of the presentation and started to look further into our needs. So many of our campuses only have one boiler, right? And that's Schmidt, that's their boiler, beautiful aged boiler. That boiler goes down, you, you've, you've got no hot water, you've got some issues going through that entire campus. Silver High School, Jose Barrios, you can see examples of exhaust fence and ventilation issues there. But Silver High School, once again, beautiful aged boiler, right? It's, it's wonderful, but it's the only boiler for that entire campus. That boiler goes down for all the spaces at the high school, you've got an issue. And I'm, I'm sure my maintenance team somewhere is cringing and lighting a candle because you know the old saying, once you start talking about something, inevitably, what's going to happen to it next week? I'm hoping that doesn't happen, but there you go. All told, we have fourteen-point-seven million dollars of priority two needs. So if you go back and you add the fourteen-point-seven, plus the seven million, you're over twenty-one million dollars worth of deferred priority ones and twos alone, okay? Financial resources, let's talk about how we address some of these issues. First and foremost, I'm gonna thank the community. The community has done a wonderful job, every six years, you renew SB nine and House Bill thirty-three. SB nine dollars are what we use to maintain our schools on a regular basis, okay? That's how we get all of our emergency needs or maintenance done. When you have the number of facilities that we have and the degree of needs that we have, oftentimes, you scale out projects you hope you can get to. But just like at home, more often than not, your projects, your plans get scrapped when you have an emergency, right? You might plan to replace the carpet somewhere, but then all of a sudden you come home and your refrigerator is dead. You, your carpet is important, but you can't do much if you don't have a refrigerator. So you scrap the carpet, you go to the refrigerator, schools are no different. We have projects that we plan to do, that we try to get to, that we prioritize. But more often than not, than not, these days, our funds go to the emergency of the day. For example, last year, we had a continued heating, a heating issue over at La Plata, right? We had to replace some systems there, and so for a short period of time, we had to put in space heaters. We had to do the same thing at Harrison Schmidt, right? We had an issue there for a short period of time, we bought some heat space heaters and put those in while the repairs were done. Oftentimes, our projects tend to be the priority of the day, just like for those of us at home. We live from emergency to emergency to an emergency. You plan to do one thing, plumbing goes out somewhere, you gotta go replace it. We just had to fix a water plumbing issue over at Cliff with the well system going into the schools. It's always how it works for us. So you take that SB nine dollars, which is up for renewal, right? And we, again, as Silver Schools, appreciate the community. We also have our House Bill thirty-three dollars, House Bill thirty-three divided up also over six years, and those dollars are used as well for projects throughout the district, right? In my last presentation, I spoke with you guys about our bonding capacity. If you remember, we have a bonding capacity at, for Silver Schools of approximately thirty-six million dollars, right? That's the most we can. Your bonding capacity is six percent of the total assessed value of residential homes in your community, right? I, I hope I said that right, if not, Raul will fix me when he speaks, right? It's only six percent. Our capacity is thirty-six. At the moment, we only have access to approximately twenty-four, it'll be twenty-five at the end of the season, right? We'll have access to about twenty-five million dollars. That's what we're hoping to engage, but there's a reason for it. So the state, the Public Schools Capital Outlay Council realizes that all of our schools, many of our schools in New Mexico, needs assistance in doing repairs. The reality is most of the schools in New Mexico are rural, they're smaller than Silver, right? Most of your state is going to be like Tucumcari, like Lourdesburg, like Animus, like Reserve, small communities, they serve. Their local tax base doesn't generate a lot of dollars for a lot of major repairs. And so the Public Schools Capital Outlay Council has access to a match. Now, up until last year, if you recall my presentation, the match for Silver Schools was the state said, you know what, expenses for repairs are pretty, pretty, pretty difficult, so we'll help you out. For every ninety-four dollars that you spend, we're gonna give you six. So you let us know when you're ready to do some projects and we're gonna help you out with our six dollars, right? Well, the reality is the match like that was throughout the state and billions upon billions upon billions were being saved because no one can access it. Because the match locally, the ninety-four percent of the cost of these projects was so out of range, people couldn't afford it. Our budget couldn't afford to do major projects at a ninety-four percent match. We couldn't go down to Cliff and really do major work there. We couldn't replace a lot of roofs, knowing that we had to come up with that ninety-four percent, we just couldn't do it. The legislature recognized this, they recognized that they had billions of dollars sitting there and no one acknowledging it or getting to it, so they changed it for three years. For three year, the, three years, starting last year, the legislature said, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna match local dollars for every sixty-three dollars that you as a community spend on your facilities, we will contribute the other thirty-seven dollars, right? They've tried to level the playing field responsibly to give communities like ours an opportunity to address significant needs. There are three categories of the ways in which they do this. But keep in mind, the most important part of this part of the conversation is, right now, they match sixty-three dollars from us, they will match thirty-seven dollars, okay? So the first way in which they look at needs is standards, right? There's this group called Standards Replacement and Systems Needs. If you're in the top one-hundred-and-seventy-five of schools, the Public Schools Capital Outlay Council says, you know what? You need a new building. And because you need a new building, we will match your dollars with that thirty-seven because you qualify. When I say top one-seventy-five, there's about seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight, seven-hundred-and-fifty public schools, but there's well over eight-hundred schools, when you take a charter schools thrown into that combination, right? But out of the, all of those schools, the schools with the worst condition needs, they categorize as the top one-seventy-five. If you're in the top one-seventy-five, they will help you replace a school. When you look at that category, Silver Schools has three schools that fit in that category that are amongst the worst-conditioned facilities, right? Not saying anything about the academic impacts, because we're doing pretty okay in that area, but talking about the conditions and age of the school, the needs of the schools. Cliff Schools ranks number twelve. Would you put that into perspective? Cliff Schools ranks number twelve of the worst-conditioned schools in the state. That's how dire the need is. Now, following that, Sixth Street is thirty-three and Jose Barrios is one-hundred-and-fifty-eight. And so the state said, if you were gonna replace any of those buildings, we will help you and we will help you replace it, if you were gonna do that. That's how they ranked it, that's what the qualification for. The second way that the PSCOC matches funds is they look at systems needs. They say to you, look, if you have a mechanical issue within your system, electrical, plumbing, fire detection, special systems, drainage, any of those systems needs at a school, we'll come in and we'll match you as well. This is how we will fund your repair needs. If you have systems needs, we'll match you. If you're in the top one-seventy-five, we will help you replace a building. That's the first part of this part of the conversation, I think, is most crucial for our community to understand. Right now, we have access to a sixty-three, thirty-seven match that will expire at the end of next year, unless the legislature decides to continue and renew that. If they don't, our match goes back to ninety-four to six, right? There's also a different way that we're also looking at leveraging support from the state. If you recall, the last time I was here presenting, I talked about the waiver. The Public Schools Capital Outlay Council realizes that even for this sixty-three, thirty-seven match, there are districts who still cannot generate enough dollars to do significant projects in their districts. They realize that if your community is doing everything it can, and you can't generate enough dollars, how can we help you? Think about this, the cost of building a new school, and this is an interesting anecdote. If you're doing an elementary, it could be anywhere between thirty to forty million dollars, right? For a small building. If you're doing a K-twelve campus, a singular K-twelve, you're looking at between forty-five to sixty-five million dollars, right? This is the cost of a school. Now, a few moments ago, I just explained to you that our, at, at our best, our capacity is thirty-six million. However, we don't even have access to that, we only have access to twenty-five million, right? We will. So even at our best, if we wanted to replace any building in our district, we can't generate enough dollars on our own to do it. This is where the Public Schools Capital Outlay Council comes into play. They say, look, if you don't have enough money, but you're doing what you can, here's how we'll help you. There are three criterias to qualify for a waiver, I'm gonna work backwards, starting with letter C. They said, look, if your community, your schools are growing at such a capacity, you've got students everywhere, two-point-five percent growth, you're, and you have a facilities master plan that says you need this in the next two years, and you're already at ten meals, you can apply for a waiver and we will adjust the waiver of percentage match and we'll contribute more. We will pay more to help you build that school, you need it. We don't qualify, we're not growing as a community at two-point-five percent. If you're in southeast New Mexico and Jau, you're probably there, right? The second waiver opportunity, if you're in a high-poverty district, you have fewer than eight-hundred students, small population, right? But that small population also has seventy percent free to do sludge and your need is greater than your fifty percent of your local match and you're at seven meals, because you're a small community, seven meals is a lot, then you know what? We will likewise waive that match and we're gonna pay more. We will come in and help you, you apply, we'll look at your needs, we'll look at what you can contribute, and we'll pay more of your need. We don't qualify, we have more than eight-hundred students. Now look at waiver category A. Waiver category A talks about total bonding capacity for the next four years is greater than the local match for an upcoming project and you're at ten meals. Our capacity is gonna be much greater, we cannot generate enough dollars. This is our best criteria access to get significant dollars from the Public Schools Capital Outlay Council to pay for renovations, not just for a new school, but to pay a higher percentage of the other projects we have. Once you hit ten meals, not only do they come in and look at that sixty-three, thirty-seven waiver match, they can go above and beyond it. To give an example of how other school districts around the state, and these are just a few, you can see the dark red, the orange, the pink, and then the light colors. The darker the color, the higher contribution the Public Schools Capital Outlay Council has levered in those communities because they've taken advantage of the waiver. You can see Gallup at three-hundred-and-ninety-eight million, Gaston, two-forty-nine, Dimming down at seven, at one-twenty-six. You can see the entire list. This is an example of districts that recognize that, look, we have a lot of needs and we cannot generate enough dollars by ourselves locally to meet all those needs. So we're gonna go to the Public Schools Capital Outlay Council and apply for waivers and leverage as much money as possible from the state so they pay a higher percentage of the cost than us. They've been doing this for years. Some schools have started this process and we can access it as well. If you look at Dona Anna down the road, which is a beautiful community, and you look at Gaston, Gaston has Chaparral, Sanity, they've got some amazingly new buildings, if you look at their community, right? They've got three high schools and they've got elementary, they're continuing to build, 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 build. And you look at the community, you go, how can they afford to do that? This is how they do it. They've leveraged their local dollars at ten meals and they basically, every year, they go to the council and apply for a waiver and get a significant increase of proportional dollars from the state to build. Dimming has a school down the road, same thing, high school. These, this is what we are trying to access as well. We're trying to take advantage that the state will come in and give more dollars and help you take care of your schools and do what needs to be done. Now, this waiver that we're talking about, the, the two, for this access, exists now and only exists for quite some time. The sixty-three, thirty-seven percent waiver, however, goes away at the end of the year, next year. It's only three years. Hopefully, the legislature will see that, the need for it, and keep it there. I wanna pause for just a second, any questions for me?
Too much questions?
No, sir, thank you.
So I'm gonna keep going, so, and if, if, if I start to get long-winded, someone wave at me, throw a bottle or something at me, and I'll stop and sit down, okay? So let's talk about how schools and how schools are funded. Here's something I wanna be really clear on, schools are funded through two means, right? Two ways in which your schools get funding. The first means is from the Public Education Department for the actual learning process within the buildings. So PED annually gives schools money to pay for teachers, pay for curriculum, pay for resources, pay for special needs, bilingual, all the elements within the school facility that facilitates learning. Your teachers, all of that money that pays for that comes from the Public Education Department. That's the internal operations of your school, that's how your schools are funded to, to run. The ex, the other funding source that happens in a school is your local dollars. The local dollars pays for facilities, right? So anything that has to do with rebuilding, maintenance needs, replacement, anything that happens with the grounds, the facilities themselves, the local dollars are what maintains that. So there are two separate pots of money. I can't use the local dollars to pay for staff, to pay for salaries. I can't use the public education dollars, right, that pays for teachers, to, to take care of buildings. Those monies aren't allowed to mix. So it's important to communicate how schools are maintained. PED, the state funds the learning, and the local community takes care of the buildings, okay? And so in order to do that, Silver Schools and Grant County has had a wonderful relationship and you've continued to renew Senate Bill nine and House Bill thirty-three to help us maintain the schools for our community. We keep our mileage at Senate Bill nine really low, right? We've never raised it, and I shouldn't say it like that, but in recent years, it's not ever been raised. We keep it at a shoestring level, the community approves it, and we're able to maintain our facilities. Please take note of the language I just used, we maintain our facilities, just like you do at home. We don't go above and beyond and try to live beyond our means, we take care of the projects that come up as they do. We try to knock out some of the minor projects that we can get to when we can afford it. We keep our schools well-maintained. We have an amazing maintenance department that when winter comes around, they know they're gonna be nursing, heating units and boilers, right? They know they gotta take care of air conditioning, they're, they're up on roofs this summer right now, painting and covering roofs as much as they can. So our maintenance team takes that Senate Bill nine dollars and they take care of our schools. We need to make sure that we renew those, it keeps your, it keeps that rate the same for Senate Bill nine, and that's how we maintain our facilities. That's pay-as-you-go. The other way is the long-term general, general obligation bonds, and this is the conversation we're having with the community, right? I talked earlier about the assessed valuation of six-hundred-and-sixteen million dollars. Now, that actually increased, this was a couple of years ago, it's, it's a little bit higher now. This was a couple of years ago, it's, it's a little bit higher now. But the point is, it allows us to have access to approximately up to thirty-six million dollars when it's available. Silver Schools in two thousand seventeen took out a GOBON, the community was generous enough to approve that, and they were able to make some improvements. You know, they built the gym at Harrison. They built, um, the Learning Tree, right? Where our students who, um, find themselves pregnant and concerned about being able to continue education, they can now continue to go to school, they have a partnership with Western, who also manages that. So that facility behind Silver Scholars exists. We also did some maintenance repairs and some, uh, upgrades to Silver High School, and every campus got touched in some way, shape, or form, right? We're still paying that off. Now, this is the interesting part of the conversation. For those of us who have credit cards and, and know Dave Ramsey, this will be an interesting, uh, little bit of tidbit, right? We pay, uh, our, our bond back, uh, through about a, a one-point-nine-two-three or a one-point-nine-two-seven, uh, tax levy. Those, that tax levy generates dollars, and we pay back the bond. That's part of what is in our, our mills, right? That's part of our mills. Now, I want you to think about this from a credit card standpoint. As you pay off what you owe, you free up dollars from your bonding capacity to be able to do projects. Now, right now, we're paying back what we owe, and we've not accessed those dollars to continue to, to do projects. That's kind of what we wanna do. But I wanna talk about the rate in which we are paying back that bond. At one-point-nine-two-three or one-point-nine-two-seven, it is at the lowest it can get. Think about this, you just maxed out your credit card? You get in your stress, because you know, oh my gosh, I've got a ten-thousand-dollar, um, bill that I gotta pay on my credit card, and you get that first monthly payment, and that monthly payment says, ah, it's only twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents. And you, as a person, goes, well, hey, twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents is pretty good, I can pay back twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents. You're paying back what you owe at the lowest rate. Now, those of us who are pretty savvy about credit cards, knowing that's gonna take forever, you're gonna pay a lot of that interest, and you're, and it's just gonna take a while. Well, we're pretty much doing that as we pay back our debt levy. We, we're trying to, as a community, you know, be conservative with our dollars, but in that process, we're paying it back at the rate it's supposed to be paid back, but at a really, really low rate, okay? It should be higher, we've never done, we've never, uh, uh, changed that, and again, that's part of the issues that we need to address as a community. The next series of data that I'm gonna show you demonstrates our comparison from Silver Schools and schools in our region and schools in the, in the state. If you recall, I showed you the slide, uh, when I came last spring, and talked about our, our total meal rate. When I say total meal rate, total meal rate means your tax levy, right? Which is one-point-nine-two-three, one-point-nine-two-seven in that range, right? It's your SB nine dollars, which I thank you so much for, and your House Bill Thirty-three. Those are three levies that combine together to come to that five-point-four, okay? And so when you look at these numbers here, you can see where other communities are in comparison. That's where we were in two thousand twenty-two in comparison to our peers. That's where we were in two thousand twenty-two in comparison to our peers. In two thousand twenty-two, we had the twel- twelfth lowest debt meal levy of the total eighty-nine schools in the state of New Mexico. Remember I talked about how you're paying back the debts that you have GOBONS on? We have the twelfth lowest. Now, earlier, I talked to you as a community about the fact that Silver Schools is, is a four-A school. We have eight campuses, multiple buildings, multiple roofs. Most of the state of New Mexico are rural schools, one building, maybe two. When you look at this comparison and, and put this into context, we're trying to maintain eight buildings, and all the square footage, the roofs, and all the repairs, and pay back our debt at a rate that is significantly lower than most of the communities around the state of New Mexico that has one or two buildings. Uh-oh. Was that the drop mic? I don't know what happened. Okay, here we go. This is two thousand twenty-two. We have the twentieth lowest meal rate in the state out of eighty-nine, one-point-nine-two-seven there, you can see. This past year, we were sixteenth out of all, but we're still at twelfth if you remove the schools at the very end in the green that don't have any debt levies. So we're still at this, this far end of being able to generate dollars for our schools. Remember I told you a few moments ago, in comparison to our pills, uh, peers, right? With eight buildings, most of these schools are one or two A. When you look at what we're trying to accomplish with the GOBONS, we're not trying to, um, keep up with the Joneses, so to speak, so much as we're trying to keep up with taking care of the needs of our schools, right? If our community is generous enough to give us this opportunity to go forward, to gain access to the matching dollars from the Capital LA Council, we would go up to right, right below that ten meal, just barely at that ten meal, which is where we need to get to. And you're probably asking, you said you're trying to get to the ten waiver, why aren't you going straight to it with this four-point-one? Right now, our debt meal levy is set so low that we already know that the Public Education Department is going to come in this summer and say to us, this is too low, we have to raise it just enough to make sure you generate enough dollars to pay your bill, right? So we know that at some point PED is gonna come in and change it from one-point-nine-two-three to, I don't know, one-point-nine-five. I don't know what they're gonna change it to, but they're gonna change it just enough to put it to where we can pay our bill. And so we anticipate that with the combination of what they're gonna adjust it to, with the approval of this bond, it'll hit, will hit at ten. We don't wanna ask for more than we need, right? If we fall short after PED's adjustment and we go to that four-point-one, then our board can make up the difference with, uh, the ed tech and adjust it just enough to hit that ten. If you recall, most recently, Cobray Schools, uh, last year, that's what they did with their community. They were about eight-point-five, or they were somewhere in that range, and they were, uh, they were going to go for that waiver to get the Public Schools Capital Outlet Council to pay a higher percentage, if not all, to build their school. And so as a community, that's what they did, right? And that's what many school districts are doing. When we talk about how is it that Hatch has a new building, or new schools in, in their fields, or how come we don't have, you know, turf fields, or how come I can go to all of these campuses in Gaston, down in Dimming, and, and all the other schools that we engage in, look at their schools and see their facilities, how is it that our community doesn't have the same? What are we not doing? This is what we're not doing, right? It is wonderful to live in a community that has, has such a low, uh, millage for our community, but the price we pay for it is our facilities for our schools and the environment. If you look at the, the column here in the middle, you can see the per capita income. These are the facts, these are my, these aren't my numbers per se, but they're from the, uh, economic analysis. You can see that in red, you can see where Silver, Grant County is, and you can see in yellow where Sierra County, Dona Anna County, and Torrance County, and Luna County. And people, I put the slide there because I get asked, well, I don't know if we can afford this, right? I say, not in, in, i- i- in a, in a plain way, that communities much poorer than ours have made the decision that they're gonna invest in their schools in this way to have the facilities they need. Same thing, if you look at the percentage of poverty, uh, between Dona Anna and Sierra, and you look at Grant County in the far right in the bottom, we're below those other counties. And I say that, again, not to dispute, but just factually speaking. Now, these counties are poor communities as well, but they've likewise, if you look at Gaston, and you look at Lovington, and you look at Lord'sburg, and most recently, Co- Cobray, right down the road from us, they've made a decision that we're gonna have to do something about our school facilities, and you can't keep waiting. And that's the conversation we have to have with our community. Now, we have a partnership and a responsibility in Silver Schools to make sure that we're educating your students to be able to graduate and go immediately into the workforce, go into the military, or go to the college. Um, you wanna make sure, and we wanna make sure, that our facilities and our schools are meeting the needs of the modern classroom, right? And in order to do that, we've gotta continue to maintain and upgrade our schools. Um, it's how we guarantee a vital community. And so, you take a look, here's where the impact is, right? And so I, I had a previous graph, and this, so this is kind of the, the data that I, that I received from, um, Mr. Villanueva. And so, he's done a really good job there. And I say that, right, Robo? Thank you. A tryeta. I said Villanueva, I looked at Villanueva, I was like, that's a tryeta. Why didn't I say that? I was, okay, I was reading that. And so, uh, when you look at this, this is the, the breakdown for how the four-point-one meals would i- impact Silver Schools. And so I, I had a graph previously, uh, that had arrows and people on it, and it was redirecting to houses, trying to communicate in a very, you know, less complicated way than this, how to determine how it's gonna impact you directly. Well, th- this is a little bit simpler, this is a simplified version of my previous slide. I took out the arrows and the people, because it was confusing, and it went in different directions, and it could cause confusion. So I just left the houses and just the columns, and you can see the breakdown there. But by doing this, for as low as, for, for many, five dollars and sixty-nine cents, or eleven dollars a month, or seventeen dollars a month, what we can do is we can prioritize facility improvements. We can look at the possibility, the strong possibility, and the focus for building Cliff Schools. We can do safety, uh, and security upgrades, and we can impact, uh, Benny Field, right? We can possibly improve the drainage, we need to improve the drainage over there. If you've ever been out there for soccer, it's, it's like a bog, if I can use that term. The, the water just pools there, right, during the seasons. Uh, we can also look at, uh, starting artificial turf for some of those fields, right? Everything takes time, but as a community, we can begin this process. By no means in five years can we do everything. This is a conversation as a community we're gonna wanna talk about and continue to do to improve your schools, to get them to where they need to be. Ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, you're gonna want your schools to be pretty modern, pretty state-of-the-art, and you can't start and stop projects every ten years. You'll never get it. The expense of construction, the pri, all of those things are gonna come and impact. Once you start this process, you gotta see it through to the end. So the committee recommendations from the Facilities Master Plan, right-size the schools. If I've got a few minutes, I'm gonna take some time and show you guys our enrollment capacity and how that's impacted us. Um, rebuild Cliff Schools, that is a dire need. Uh, safety upgrades and the things I just talked about. Twenty-two million dollars per, for, worth of priority one and two needs, right? Just those first two sections, not even looking at the three, fours, and fives, but hoping we can touch on those. Um, those are the needs of the schools. Now, a couple of weeks ago, or I, I will actually say about a month ago, I, I, I went to look at the papers, I do from time to time, and we had just had a board meeting, and Juno was there. Juno is an amazing writer, and so I was looking forward to reading her article. And I opened up the article, and the headline of the article was, Jose Barros and Sixth Street's Closing. It's like, oh, God, that is not how that was supposed to go. Juno's article was extremely well-written. She captured everything perfectly. She really reflected the Facilities Master Plan, the conversation the board had, and the way they wanted that to go. The headline, however, was slightly misleading in that, yes, the conversation from the Facilities Master Plan recognized that we have an enrollment issue. If I get to that slide, if I have time. We, our buildings back in the day were built for four thousand students, or about twenty-one hundred students. They recognized the cost, and, and that from maintenance, electric, water, we gotta have a conversation with our community. And they made a recommendation to the, to the board. Look, as we go through this process, you're gonna need to look at consolidating some of the buildings. And they made their suggestions as a roadmap of how you could do it. The board said, we appreciate that, we recognize that this is something that we're gonna need to do over the next five years. We're gonna form a task force that will have some of the members from the Facilities Master Plan and members of the community to look at this recommendation and give us some feedback on the best way to do it. That got translated in the paper the next day as a headline, these two buildings are closing. So it is slightly misleading. Are we gonna be consolidating elementary schools in the next five years, one or two? Quite likely, yes, it's a responsible thing to do. What is that gonna look like, in which campus? I couldn't tell you that just yet. I can tell you that over the next couple of years, it's not, the next two or three years, it's not gonna happen immediately. It's gotta take time. It's a conversation you have with your community, and it's when you look at the numbers. So that's gonna happen in some time in the next five years, but it's gonna be done professionally and responsibly, not knee-jerk. So I had to spend, you know, about a month telling everyone, no, schools are not closing this summer. No, there's gonna be a building there, and, and, and get that taken care of. But I, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that in this presentation, 'cause I'm sure you heard that conversation as well. I'm gonna touch base and ch- scroll over to enrollment trends. So first things first, what you see here is the district population. And you can see the census from two thousand, two thousand ten, and two thousand twenty. Blue is the oldest, then two thousand ten was the, in the one in the middle, and then two thousand twenty. You can see the populations in the bottom. You can see, over time, that the younger age, five, five to thirteen, fourteen to seven, you can see the decline of population there. And then you can see, interestingly enough, but probably not coincidental and pretty, uh, familiar with many of you, the retirement age population in the last twenty years have continued to increase based on census data. You can see the comparison of the age structure between Silver in blue. In the middle, you can see Grant County, and then you can see how Grant County and Silver compares to the state. Just a little below in each of the, uh, school age groups, higher percentage, um, in their tire group in comparison to the state. Let's take a look at the cumulative percentage change in births since two thousand seven. You can see the decline in birth rates for Grant County, and you can also see the same decline in birth rates for the state as well. Enrollment trends. You can see that Silver Schools has steadily seen a decline in enrollment of approximately two percent, right? Since two thousand seven, you can see that trend. We're projected, uh, uh, continued two percent between two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-nine. Why? I refer back to the birth rates, right? If you don't have students going into the schools, you can see why that trend continues to hold. That wasn't me. Uh, so now, let's take a look at building capacity. What you're looking at in blue is what the building can hold, right? The building was designed, shout-out to our fire marshal. This is the maximum number of seats you can have in a classroom, right, or students. So at Silver Scholars, you can have one-hundred-and-thirty-seven seats. You can see the red number there, which indicates how many students were enrolled last year. The gold or yellow number, uh, and it projects what that enrollment will look like in two thousand twenty-nine. You can see the comparison for Silver Scholars in Sixth Street. Sixth Street, two-hundred-and-eighty-five capacity, one-hundred-and-thirty-six last year, one-twenty-five in the future. For your elementary campuses, you can see that Cliff, the elementary part of the campus, capacity is one-hundred-and-forty-four students. They had a hundred last year, and in the next several years, you'll get down to about seventy-nine. Stout, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight students, capacity currently only holds three-hundred-and-thirteen, projected two-forty-eight. Schmidt, five-oh-two, three-hundred-and-thirty-four is what they had last year, and they go to ninety-three. Same thing with Jose Barros, three-fourteen capacity, two-thirteen is what they had, and one-ninety-nine is what they're going to have. La Plata Middle School, six-hundred-and-fifty-seven student capacity, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine students enrolled and projected two-eighty-two. The high school portion of Cliff, four-hundred-and-sixty students in its heyday could be there. Projected, or what it was, was a hundred and one, projected at ninety. I mean, pause for a second. When you rebuild a campus, the Public Schools Capital Outlet Council comes in and says, we will rebuild the school, and if you apply for the waiver and you get the waiver, excellent, we will pay a higher percentage. And when we rebuild that school, we will right-size it. We will build it for the capacity you have, not for what it was before, or what you hope it to be. That's the efficiency part of the construction. Silver High School, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven students. I think someone told me there was thirteen-hundred students in that building at one point years ago. It now has six-hundred-and-forty-seven students, and is projected to be five-hundred-and-eighty-seven. Also, you can see the comparison in blue of what the capacity is, what it actually holds, and what is projected to hold. Functional capacity is four-thousand-three-hundred. Our enrollment last year was two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-two, and we're projected, uh, to have two-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty. We currently have fifty percent of the seats in our buildings vacant amongst all lead schools. In two thousand twenty-nine, it'll be about fifty-five percent of our schools vacant. What does that mean, right? To look at this, if you take all the needs and the space that we, we have, and what we pay for maintenance, for electricity, for, for utilities, we spend one-point-four million dollars annually on empty space. This is where the recommendation from the Facilities Master Plan Committee came in and said, you gotta do something about this. You can't see it probably from where you are, but you can see the estimated cost per building for empty space, okay? There it is. Tough conversations to have, but it's the reality. And with that, I'll pause for any questions for the community and from the commissioners.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, and again, if there's any questions, or if there's any need for anyone, please know that you can reach out to me. Um, I would gladly come to continue to present and answer questions about this. Critical need for the schools, and it's a great opportunity to advance ourselves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
We're going to move on to the next item of our agenda. It's going to be under B, Community Partnership for Children, Ms. Kayla Carrasco.
Good morning, thanks for having me. I'm Kayla Carrasco from Community Partnership for Children. And I wanted to come here and let you guys know kind of some of the things that we've been working on over the past year and then going forward. Last year, we were able to, as you all know, create the kid space, the after-school program that's taking place up at Western. It took a partnership to do that, collaboration with the schools, Western, and other entities to make that work. We've also been able to increase our home-based providers by about four as of last year. And we have two coming through our program that we're supporting consistently throughout the whole process. We're also trying to increase the amount of caregiver education in the community. So that's something that we're working on this year, trying to really get anybody that's caring for young children, whether it's grandparents, parents, to be able to have the basic skills and knowledge to create these homes and environments that are positive for the children. We do have an event coming up in September that I wanted to make you all aware of. We're doing a fundraiser. We work solely off of grants and funding, and so this is going to be something that's going to support us to continue the work that we're doing here in the community. And so September fourteenth, the county has been able to support us in providing the location. And so we will be out in the community asking for sponsorships, donations, and anything to support that event. And that was about it for me. I don't have a lengthy presentation, so if you have any questions for me, I can stick around for just a second.
Commissioners?
No, thank you for the information you provided, Bill, in the back.
Commissioner Medina.
So can you talk a little bit about a project that you asked Freeport-McMoRan for, some project you're trying to do with a building?
Yeah, so in the future, we're hoping to create some sort of a family resource hub. And so our idea is going with possibly a children's museum and then having our services within that. And so hoping to incorporate the parent education, our partnerships that we currently have with our Lynx Partnership, all the different centers in the community that provide the early childhood education, and then also the home-based providers. And so we've asked that we receive funding from Freeport to purchase a building. And then we've also been able to create a business plan to ask the county and the cities for support on that to continue increasing the revenues so that we can support it throughout the upcoming years. It's in the very early stages, so.
Anything else, Commissioner?
That's it.
Thank you, we appreciate everything you do, thank you. Moving on to our next presentation would be Grant County Community Health Council, Ms. Valerie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, community members, good to be here. My name is Valerie Sek, and I am the coordinator for the Grant County Community Health Council. And I'm really, it's a pleasure to be here today to kind of highlight some of the things that the Health Council has been working on and also the good work of the community. So excited to be here. We are going, so this is, this is the quarterly update for July two thousand twenty-four. Is there a clicker that I can use? You have it where? Oh, it's displayed, okay, so you'll just be running through as I'm talking? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so next slide. We're going to go over some updated documents that we have been working on, including the mission and vision statement, the updated structure, as well as the updated guidelines of the Grant County Community Health Council. We're also going to go over some recent efforts, including our collaboration with the B A M D program and the students that we worked with, the Senior Health Fair in Membres, New Mexico, and the continued efforts with that, the Grant County Community Health Council Snell Prevention Day that happened in May, as well as the work of the community coordination team. We're going to touch on the quarterly newsletter, I'm going to give you a brief update on that, as well as our work with the local collaborative six. Next slide. Okay, so some updated documents here. You can go on to the next slide. This is our revised mission and vision for the Health Council. So in some way, shape, or form, in updating these three documents, we have worked with either the transition team that came out of our process of the, the community health needs and assets assessment, or the community coordination team, or the community at large to kind of help to revise some of these documents. So with the revised mission and vision, we took about a week with the community coordination team, and we thought through what it really means, what we really want to see as our mission and vision as a community with this small group of people that we worked with on behalf of the Health Council. So the updated mission statement is to bring people together to assess, plan, prioritize, and coordinate local efforts to empower the community. And the updated vision statement of the Health Council is to form a diverse and passionate group of individuals that unite to strengthen local resources and build new opportunities in Grant County. I'm going to talk, before I go on to this next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about the handouts that you all have in front of you. We have updated the structure of the Health Council. So the main thing to point out about the updated structure is that it's going to be largely our efforts, and our efforts are going to be largely highlighted by the community voice. So that's really important to us, really hearing the nuances of the community, what they think is important within the community. And it's important, it's important for us as a Health Council to really home in on that. And then these initiatives get trickled down to the steering committee, which is a group of about four to seven individuals that will help guide the Health Council work. And then it gets trickled down to the broader Health Council. And within the Health Council, there are, there are partnerships that we work with that are their own entity that we kind of work alongside with within the Health Council. And then there are committees or teams, as we call them, that work directly under the Health Council. An example of that is the community coordination team. So this is a little bit of information on the community coordination team. Oh, one more thing. We have also updated the guidelines of the Grant County Community Health Council, which largely gives us a basis on how the Health Council operates. So within the updated guidelines, you'll see how we manage our meetings, the updated mission and vision, the updated structure, all of the operational stuff that goes into the Health Council. Moving forward into the work of the community coordination team, I'm really privileged to work with this group of individuals, which is largely made up of healthcare workers, social workers, and community health workers, community care coordinators within the community. And actually, these individuals came to the Health Council and they were like, hey, we need a place to where we can really congregate and share resources within the community so that we know what's going on internally, and that way we can share resources appropriately to our patients within the community. And one of the first things that we did was build a roster, an internal roster, so that we can kind of decrease these silos within the community that may happen when we're trying to, when healthcare workers and social workers are trying to provide care to their patients, trying to provide resources to their patients. It's really important that we have a good connection of these people that are working together within our community so that we're all on the same page, and that way we can provide, they can provide a good form of wraparound care as best they can for their patient. So the group purpose is to recognize the importance of community coordination and connections, gather key people within the community to help identify, gather, and develop resources, and help fill gaps to encourage continuity in Grant County. So we started off with three basic goals. One of them was to expand personal and professional relationships. We want to get to know each other, we want to really be connected in that way. Identify key community partners to assist with group initiatives. And then the third goal was to gather pertinent local information and work together to address needs within the community. Our recent areas of, our recent topics of discussion include transportation gaps, provider gaps. We've largely been talking about Medicare and Medicaid and how we can help to try and educate the community and provide some education toward, toward kind of, toward helping fill that gap with the lack of education with Medicare and Medicaid, senior services, and advocacy for these services locally. So this is a brief little handout that we made, it's kind of hard to see, but, five transportation tips for a successful trip. So one of the things that we noticed was that when people would utilize their insurance to, 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 to try and utilize transportation, there was a lot of things missing. Like, there was, there's some planning ahead that needs to happen, there's some needs that need to be kind of considered. Like, hey, are you making your appointment forty-eight hours in advance? Are you able to, are you able to have a medical need of necessity, things like that? So we really wanted to kind of gather those resources for the community and help, help kind of fill that gap. I know I'm kind of being a little bit repetitive in that way, but really working with a good group of individuals with the community coordination team. Next slide. Okay, this is my favorite part. So the Grant County Snell Prevention Day happened in May of two thousand twenty-four. And this event was, happened in promoting prevention, education, community engagement, and physical wellness. So it really gave us an opportunity to work with the, our partners at Snell Middle School, as well as really engage with the, with the, with the middle school children. And what we did was, we really wanted to focus on mental wellness, we wanted to focus on physical wellness, and how that taps into prevention. Next slide. So there's a lot of pictures provided here, and you can kind of click through them, but I just wanted to mention what a, what an awesome event this was and how much the community came through. We have partners such as the New Mex, the New Mexico National Guard Counter Drug Task Force, Healthy Kids, Healthy Communities, the Grant County Sheriff's Office, the Sixth Judicial District Court, Girl Scouts, NMDOH, Baird Fire Department, the National Center for Frontier Communities and Food Hub Partners, SAS, Y-SAP, HMS, Grant County DWI Recovery Management Center, and Snell Middle School. So, yeah, we all got together to kind of emphasize the importance of physical activity and prevention as well as mental wellness, and how that is all kind of incorporated into one. We also had the opportunity to work with the U N M Combined B A M D Program, which was an absolute pleasure. Oh, let me just say too, with the Snell Prevention Day, we got the opportunity to work really closely with Margaret, Margaret Begay, and it was just smooth sailing, it was a really, really good event. So with the B A M D master, sorry, B A M D Program collaborative efforts, we had the opportunity to work with students from this program to help create a senior resource guide for our most, for, for our senior health fair that happened in Membres, New Mexico, and this was in June. And what, what happened was that we, we, we worked with these students. We, they helped us kind of vet the information that we were gathering for the senior resource guide, and we helped, we hoped to utilize it in the future with future health fairs that we're having in partnership with the Youth Substance Awareness and Prevention Coalition. So we plan to do a senior health fair every month until we've gone through all of the senior, the senior centers. And it was just a great opportunity to work with these students. It was Isa, Kaylee, and Sydney. And the program is designed to help address New Mexico's physician shortage in the communities across the state. So it was really a pleasure. These are some pictures from the senior health fair in Membres. We were able to provide the community with free health screenings. The partners for the Membres Senior Health Fair, I'm also going to mention because they were beginning years, beginning years of HeLa Regional, we had the USDA, Christina Ortiz provided some resources, the Youth Substance Awareness Prevention Coalition, Membres Valley Action Lead, Grant County DWI, Adult Protective Services, Literacy Link, HMS was there, Tadasa's Funeral Home, Amber Care, HeLa Regional Medical Center, Sixth Judicial District Attorney's Office, New Mexico Workforce Connection, Legal Aid, and of course, our B A to M D students were there as well to help assist with that. And here's just some really cute, I love all these pictures. Legal Aid was there, yeah, just providing some really great resources to rural communities in Membres, New Mexico. And we look forward to many more senior health fairs in the future. The last thing that I'm going to touch on is our work with local collaboratives. And really what this is, is just ensuring that we're having collaborative conversations across the tri-county area when it comes to behavioral health. So traditionally, behavioral health collaboratives were created in two thousand and four. And the governor signed a law into a statute creating the state, these state health collaboratives. And what they are, they're, they're trying to connect people across the tri-county area so that we're ensuring that we're having these conversations and that no one's left out of the loop. So it's very important to us that every three months that we attend each other's Health Council meetings in each of the tri-county areas such as Hidalgo County, Luna County, and Grant County. And that way, we're all kind of included in one another's conversations, and we're seeing how we can help fill those gaps across the tri-county area. Next slide. I kind of covered that. This goes into a little bit of detail about behavioral health collaboratives. And again, essentially, we're all kind of working together to attend each other's meetings, make sure everyone's included in those conversations regarding behavioral health. And lastly, you have a handout in front of you. We have started the Grant County Community Health Council Networking Newsletter. So our plan is to do a quarterly newsletter. And the main, the main edition highlighted Adult Protective Services. So you'll have a little handout in front of you. We really wanted to make sure that we were highlighting the people, the local people that work within Adult Protective Services and all of the good work that they do within the community. Also, there's a detailed page about what Adult Protective Services is, as well as what's on the horizon for the future, what people may want to look out for. And we plan to do this, again, like I mentioned, quarterly. There is, there's going to be one coming out in August, so keep on the lookout for that. I will send it out virtually, and it'll also be posted on social media sites. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else, next slide. That's it, that's my name, and that's how you contact me. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. J, tell me about the Adult Protective, no, sorry. Tell me where I can find the Adult Protective Services information?
Yes, absolutely, I have, you should have a handout in front of you, but I actually have one on hand if you would like this one.
I've got your slide here, but I don't see it, so.
Yes, it was too much information to put on one slide, so I have, it's like a little booklet here.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. J. Thanks. No other question?
No, sir.
No? Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to next item D on the presentation's recognition of Grant County Treasurer, Mr. Patrick Kahn. Mrs. County Manager.
Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the achievements of our treasurer. He was awarded the New Mexico Certified Treasury Official at the New Mexico Counties Conference that was held in Las Vegas in June. And what this is, is New Mexico Edge, which is a service through New Mexico State University's Cooperative Extension Service, has designed this program to provide a course of study particular to the positions that we hold within county government. And so Patrick has completed his, his course of study and is now a certified treasurer through New Mexico Edge. So I just wanted to present you with the certificate and acknowledge the extra work and your willingness to go above and beyond in your position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Thank you. Congratulations. Moving on to discussions, can I have the HMS Quarterly Report by Dr. Dan Otero, CEO?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and County Officials. Glad to be back for the next quarterly update. I did provide some information in your packet. I do want to provide some brief highlights, if I may. With the, within the initial report, I just wanted to provide an update on services rendered by our primary services within Hidalgo Medical Services. And you can see that for the first half of the county year 2024, we, in the medical division, approximately, just shy of nine thousand unduplicated patients served with just over fourteen thousand visits. We've added two medical providers since my last report, three months ago. One physician and one physician assistant. To stay within the medical division update, I think you probably all heard, we opened our members clinic on July second. Two days a week, Megan Montoya, Certified Nurse Practitioner, is serving that, that clinic out there. And we also will be increasing that to three and a half days, probably early September, as she's finishing up her HMS fellowship. We also have set a tentative date for Thursday, August first, at nine AM for an official grand opening and ribbon cutting at that members clinic. If you all can make that, we'd really appreciate that. Within the Behavioral Health Services Division, there's been twenty-three hundred, and I'm just rounding up, rounding here, twenty-three hundred unduplicated patients with eight thousand three hundred plus visits in that division. Behavioral Health has increased their provider staffing by two with an increase in a psychiatric, one psychiatric nurse practitioner and one therapist. I just want to make sure I got that number right, so forgive me. And a therapist. So we're continuing to grow the services. And here in a while, Dr. Arizaga will be talking about some behavioral health response plans that will definitely drive up those needs, drive up the numbers and the need for providers. Within the Dental Division, two thousand six hundred and sixty-six unduplicated patients served in the first six months with over forty-four hundred visits. And we remain at five dental professionals until August. We have two new dentists coming in sometime around August at the start of that timeframe. Family Support Services, again, these are enabling services that are required by HERSA for us to provide, which includes insurance enrollment and helping patients manage social determinants of health such as housing, food insecurities, support with utilities, et cetera. We had nine hundred and seventy-one unduplicated individuals receive those services with about twelve hundred visits. Also, as an update, in your report, we have hired a director, and I think I mentioned this last time or recently, but Erin Holmes, who we all, most of us know, and, and went to school with here as a local from Silver City, is now serving as a director. And he has engaged really assertively and is doing a really wonderful job so far. And we're really, really happy to have him. You'll notice a lot, a significant increase in events for our seniors. As mentioned by Ms. Valerie regarding the health fair, and those are being planned out at the rest of the centers. They also did a big celebration with some state grant funds recently, celebrating the seniors where we transported seniors from all five sites, for four sites, and to join the Silver City seniors recently. As an update, we held our Jump Into Summer Event on June twenty-second. We had over seven hundred kids register for that event and participate. And that's, so we're expect, we, we estimate a couple hundred more people were there. So it was a really successful event, probably the most well-attended that we've had in, with that event in quite some time. And we're really thankful for all the sponsors to help make that a, a great event. Additionally, I know it's, it's not Grant County, but on July twentieth, we're holding our second annual Celebrate Hidalgo County. And it's very similar to our Jump Into Summer Event that we, that we just held here in Grant County. It's, it's got a large health-related theme to it, but we also rent the swimming pool down there for the kids in the community. And it's always a well-attended event, at least it was last year. And again, we extend our invitation to you all to join us for that if you can. Again, that's Saturday, July twentieth. I'd like to also update before I finish up here. We did two required, we did two of the five required public hearings for our senior centers. We did the first one in Membras and then we did the second one in HeLa. And during the transition, it was a little bit of a delay to get the results of those sessions and surveys that we did with the seniors. But I do have the results for the Membras public hearing. And I'd love to just quickly walk through those so you can get a feel for the kind of data that we're getting out of that. And before I do that, Erin is scheduling the next, the other three, which is going to be the Silver City Senior Center, Santa Clara, and Ina Mitchell in Lourdesburg. Within the next forty-five days, he's going to do all three of those back-to-back. So for the members' results, we had approximately twenty-five questions that we asked our seniors to respond back to based on the services that we're allowed to provide currently under our current contracts with the AAA and potential services that might be needed in addition to what we currently provide. So we had thirty, a total of thirty-eight seniors respond to the survey, twenty male, eighteen female. And twenty-eight of the thirty-eight said that they were able to attend in person to have congregate meals, meaning that independent enough to come and do that in person. Ten said no. So, so it's, you'll, you'll see as I'm walking through this data, as they're saying that they're using it, these are the ones that are saying they want it. So there's twenty-eight receiving congregate meals in Membras. Currently receiving home-delivered meals was twelve. And it's the same twelve that said they need it are the same ones that are currently receiving it. Currently receiving transportation services, this would surprise me, was there's currently three receiving transportation and only three said that they need additional transportation services. Now, I want to highlight that is traditionally, transportation is, I want to come in to the congregate meals, but I don't have a way to get there. And so we go pick them up and bring them in and take them home. The other elements of transportation, such as taking them for pickup groceries or for other social events, have not been as emphasized in the past. And so we'll see those numbers go up as we continue to move in that direction more assertively. Difficulty using transportation was the same three. So again, it's just three people saying that they need that transportation. And the same three also marked that they need, that they could use ADA transportation in the future, which currently we don't have the ADA transportation capabilities at any of our sites right now, nor are we contracted with the state to do that, at least not yet. And then the next question I want to share with you, do you have a family member who acts as a caregiver for you? Five of the seniors said yes. And the same five said that they would love support in that with home, in-home respite, support for those caregivers. Four of the, of the thirty-eight said that they're interested in adult daycare. And the same, so, so these groups were the same five people marked all of these categories. In-home respite, adult daycare, case management, meal prep, assistance with meal prep, assistance with shopping, managing their money, making telephone calls, lighthouse work, chores, or nutritional counseling. So what that tells me is of the thirty-eight seniors that filled out this survey, there is a need for these other services for five of those. So the, as we go through these assessments at each of the sites, the question is, do we want to expand those services? And if so, how do we fund that? And for us to get additional funding to support that, could be volunteers though, but to get additional funding to support that, we have to go to the legislature and AAA and ask for funding. And that wouldn't be available to do until 2026. So again, making good progress. We have, from a staffing, I put it in there, I think we have two positions open out of the thirty-three that we have across the system. So the, the funding request from the state, we're going to continue to advocate for more and more. We have a pretty significant shortfall right now, now that we've staffed up. I don't know if you remember, I was here last time, we were about eleven physicians down. So Erin has been doing a great job of getting staff in there. We have completed our state AAA annual audit, which is, you know, an audit on services and contract adherence. And we had a few findings and we submitted our corrective action plan, which was accepted, I think, two weeks ago now. And all those corrective items are being addressed. So that's pretty much all I have, I think, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if I have.
Dr. Otero, did they reach out to you from Workforce Connection to?
I think I got an email either Friday, so yes, I think they've reached out.
You know, I think that'd be good if, you know, help budget-wise, if we can help with some of the training costs, et cetera, so.
Yeah, thanks, and I appreciate that.
No, we appreciate, and just wanted to tell you thank you for the meeting we had, I believe it was last week maybe.
Right.
Thank you, and we appreciate that. Yeah, I think we're on the right path and whatever we could do to help our senior centers, please let us know, let our county manager know.
We'll do that, and we appreciate it. And the Board of Directors at HMS was very pleased with the, with the meeting and the, in the conversation and the collaboration. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner?
So Mr. Otero, once again, thanks for the meeting. It was really informative. And thanks for bringing the members clinic back up to, back up to operating status. In the future, I, I understand things happen. In the future, if something's going to change, an address, a provider, something, can we sit down and talk? Because you don't realize how much you impact those people out there.
Absolutely.
They are very concerned about those medical services, especially with the shortage of EMS staff out there right now. They rely on you guys a lot, and I've heard that a lot over the last few months. And it just, if I can help in any way, please let me know because they, they really appreciate you guys and they bank on you guys.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. And if I may, I want to thank you for your support and help. You know, Ms. Megan Montoya, full ACLS Pal certified, it's a frontier, we call it a frontier clinic. So we're getting her fully equipped to respond to all the emergencies out there while she's waiting for paramedic response from Silver City or helicopters, whatever's needed, so. Yeah, we appreciate that. Thank you. All right?
Yeah, I want, I want to thank you also and HMS for, for all you're doing. The, I'm hearing good things from both HeLa and Members Senior Centers, so thanks for, we're evidently past the COVID stage and, you know, thanks for the changes that have taken place there. Yeah, and the clinic, hearing good things about that, now Members, so good, thank you. Also impressed with the number of mental health patients that you're serving in Grant County. Incredible, eight thousand visits year-to-date, twenty-four hundred separate individuals. So that's providing, that's meeting a huge gap with behavioral health, you call it mental health services. So thank, thanks. And yeah, also, all three of us were able to attend that meeting that you sponsored with, with your board. Very informational there and, and thank you. HMS is doing some great things, so thanks.
We appreciate that and thank you, Commissioner. The, the behavioral health update that Dr. Arizaga is going to provide has some additional great plans with great news. And so I'll let, leave that update to her because I think you're going to like what you're hearing. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Otero. Next discussion could be the Tucasa Quarterly Report. Dr. Teresa Arizaga.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us here today to give you a behavioral health update and specifically about Tucasa. I'll start with the graph slides. So, but before I start, I'd like to also publicly recognize our Tucasa Advisory Board Committees. We have Alicia Edward Committee members, Alicia Edwards, Christina Wolford Castillo, Dr. Robert Garrett, Joseph Andazola, Ron Hao, Ronald Hartley, and Suzie Trujillo. We're very grateful for all the work that they've and dedication they've given to Tucasa and, and how it's evolved over time. Just for many years, a lot of them have put so much effort into that, so we're very grateful. So, so starting with the slide, the first one is related to Tucasa in general. We had over, just this last month, seven hundred and forty-nine booked appointments with three hundred and twenty-two completed, which is about right. What we have every month is a little more than fifty percent no-show or reschedule. So, so we're right where we usually are there with two hundred and twenty-seven unique patients. The next slide shows our MAT patients and what we, our services there. For this most recent month of June, we had forty-four booked appointments, thirty completed, and twenty-eight unique patients. Right now, we have six MAT prescribers, so I'm not counting the therapists. You know, we have several therapists who are MAT providers, but specifically the people who prescribe medications to help these patients. We have six right now with another one that has recently agreed to come on board with HMS as well. And of these six, three are behavioral health providers and the other three are primary care providers. So the next update I wanted to give was just briefly regarding grants that HMS has applied for. We've applied for a behavioral health expansion grant and a justice-involved grant. Both of them are working with a lot of the patients that we serve at Tucasa. We work, we'll be working in collaboration with the Detention Center, our local hospital, to serve more patients with mental health or substance use issues. Both grants are for two years, each at five hundred thousand dollars per year. So a total of two million dollars for two years if we were to receive both those grants. One of the, the biggest updates that Dr. Otero was talking about is related to a regional behavioral healthcare proposal, which is included in your packet. And I won't go through all the details, but basically, I think we all have been talking about it, how the local need, the state need nationally, the need for behavioral services is, is really big. And just looking at HMS, I know Dr. Otero touched briefly on year-to-date visits for behavioral health. But looking at, in 2023, we had over fourteen thousand visits for behavioral health. Now, that's just counting our behavioral department, our primary care department, our medical providers, they also serve behavioral health patients. But it's, we, we don't necessarily capture all of those because they're not labeled behavioral health. But really, behavioral health is primary care. And so they are seen every day and serving a lot of our behavioral health patients. In 2023, we had just our crisis visits, we're almost three hundred visits. And year-to-date, we're at almost two hundred visits now for just crisis intervention. And that's people who might walk in asking for, for help urgently. With, related to this regional approach, we've been working in collaboration with local officials, with state officials, our current state administration and Legislative Health and Human Services Committee to propose a regional healthcare plan, which I've described in several phases. The phases are not dependent on each other and one doesn't have to come before the other and they could happen concurrently. But this is a really exciting concept to how we can help this region of our state. So Phase One, I labeled as really working in conjunction. So, um, phase one, I labeled as really working in conjunction with our local emergency room and helping with, behavioral health, uh, patients who are experiencing, uh, any kind of behavioral crisis, which includes, um, mental health or substance use crisis in the emergency room. Also, um, reopening our crisis triage center, uh, developing a mobile crisis response, um, throughout our, our area, and also working on a fourteen-day crisis stabilization unit, and eventually a regional inpatient psychiatric unit. Um, I, I haven't, I included more detail in the report and I'll stand for any questions if anyone has any.
Commissioners?
Just a quick question.
Go ahead, Commissioner, yes.
Doctor Arizaga, in the base two crisis triage center talks about referring to higher level of care. Um, is HMS going to be involved in the transport of those patients that they have to be, or?
So, that's the idea of a crisis triage center is that the, um, the care for that patient, including getting the patient to where they need to be, starts there at the crisis triage center and not referring to, um, a law enforcement or to a local emergency room.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I asked you a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Doctor Arizaga, so, um, I, yeah, I probably don't even know, um, where to start, but. So, phase one is, um, I, I guess that's in coordination with HEAL Regional Medical Center, yeah?
Yes, sir.
So, how far, how far off is this, or are you already in?
So, Doctor Otero's been, um, in conversations with our local CEO regarding this. And I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, yeah?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so we've been working with the HERSA directly to find out what it's going to take to do that integration as an FQHC with the local hospital. And, um, the big barrier we've already run into is medical malpractice under the HERSA umbrella. We're not able to embed our providers, even via telehealth, into that organization using that approach. What we're exploring, however, is starting a separate LLC under the HMS umbrella, so that we can, we can run that support and assistance at the, up for the hospital, separate from, um, the HERSA umbrella of medical malpractice, if that makes sense. So, what, where I'm going with that is there's, we're finding a secondary solution to provide the support that we've been discussing with the hospital. And, and if I can just add real quick, cause, um, I attended the Legislative Health and Human Services Committee in Taos last week. And, um, it was quite interesting to watch the committee of legislators, um, reflecting and getting information back on their investments over the years for behavioral health. And, um, it was the main, the main message that I heard and that I want to reflect back, is the commitment from the current administration and the Legislative Health and Human Services to invest in the communities in the manner that we've been talking about. And, um, you know, to, to paraphrase again, was why are, why are these communities not coming forward and asking for the money that's available to make this happen? And I said, well, wait till you get Silver City. Because we're, they're going to be here in September and we'll both be presenting to them, and by then, we expect to have the estimates of what it's going to cost for this multi-tiered approach, specifically the inpatient unit, and, um, be able to give them a number that we can take to the legislature and say, we've got to make this happen. Um, this, this has gotten too big, too fast, and we, we're going to, we're going to ask for the, for what it takes to put this together. The, my biggest concerns in the recent past is our ability to recruit practitioners. And if you saw the data I shared in, in, in Doctor Arizaga's report, it's, it's, uh, we're getting to a healing point, meaning we're finding the providers and they're coming in and providing the services needed. And we're getting a lot of applications now, we don't, not sure what's changed, um, in the market, but whatever happening and what we're doing is working for us, and we're just hoping that that continues. But then we'd be able to staff up for these, for these different services, um, effectively, so. Hopefully that was helpful with that issue.
Yeah, thank you, thank you both, that's, uh, this is encouraging. I think GRMC's, uh, struggle, uh, meeting those needs, so I'm glad to see the part of it here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate all you do, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to your next items, going to be discussion regarding FY twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty, twenty thirty? It's the ICIP, Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning, Chairman and Members of the Board. Um, before you is a draft ICIP ranking, uh, that both the county manager and myself have kind of gone through, uh, and cleaned up some projects and, and have added some new ones based off of some department heads, uh, uh, submittals. Uh, so before you, um, well, for Thursday's meeting will be the resolution and supporting documents to actually approve the ICIP based off of some discussion and then whatever rankings that you have, uh, for input today. Uh, this is due on Friday, um, with the state, so today would be the perfect time to really formalize this ranking processes and where you would like to see these projects, or if you want to see any new projects, uh, based off of any, any recent developments on your end. Uh, so at this point, it's time for any questions, or if you just want to go through this, this list and kind of talk about where things should be or where they should fall and, and what your thoughts are.
Anything, County Manager?
I would just, I would be willing to explain any of the items. Uh, most of these you have seen on the ICIP, um, before. We've just escalated them in the order of what we feel, um, order of importance, um, or items that, for example, the airport parking lot, we, you see a lot of grants come through for the airport. However, that has to be for airport operations, like in the field, we're not going to get money for, um, parking lot improvements or anything of that nature. Um, the big item that I want to draw your attention to is, uh, item number ten, which is titled the Southwest Regional Behavioral Health Center. And this is what, um, Doctor Arizaga and Doctor Otero just spoke to. And in some conversations with the Lieutenant Governor, um, we feel that it's important to be, to have this item on, um, the county's ICIP. The city's also including it on their ICIP, as we realize the significant need of behavioral health services in our community. And, um, that is a placeholder in the event that money is available, that at least it is on our ICIP and we, um, we have the opportunity to accept any funding that would come our way. So, that's, um, that's a big ticket item, as you can see, and that's why we've placed that in the top ten.
So, I can stop getting on HEAL Regional to open their behavioral health unit and stomping my feet and, uh, all that, so we can go this direction?
Yes, we think this is a much, uh, more feasible direction to go. Um, and I think this has a lot more traction, um, and has the ability to come to fruition before they're going to open their BHU. That's just my personal opinion.
No, no, that's fine, I mean, I can, I mean, I, I like this idea, I just, you know, I've been after the health tech to, uh, they need to open that behavioral health unit and, uh, well, now I can take a step back on that piece and go from there. Also saw we have another new one, number eleven, search department equipment and enhancements.
Yes, sir, um, that was submitted by the sheriff. Um, and part of his request, uh, says to purchase, equip and replace vehicles, and equipment to include a three-D laser scanner and virtual reality training system for the sheriff's office.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, so would you remind me what, uh, specifically, number one, the detention center retrofit? I know we've been through that, but just briefly.
Sure, so the detention center retrofit, um, was submitted again this year by Detention Center Administrator Joseph Andazola. And that is to enclose the, um, the male control unit center for added security, uh, and cut off, uh, access to the, to male control center from detainees, uh, to place handcuff passes in the recreation yard doors for access, uh, to detainees in the rec yard in an incident, uh, and to retrofit the laundry area for better security, uh, so that remains, uh, still the top priority.
Thank you.
Commissioner Medina, you have anything?
County Manager Randy, I'm not sure. Um, should the water project be somewhere on this? In case we got to help out with that water project? I thought they asked on TNT with a boat in it to, uh, at least put on the ICIP somewhere. I know Bayer did, I know something Clatta did, or they did, I thought we were supposed to be involved in that project as well.
We, we could add it, um, I don't know what kind of dollar figure you would want to put on that, um, even though we have no customers.
Yeah.
Would we, how would you like us to put that on there?
I don't know, it's an interesting question, but, um, let me see if I can reach out Alex as fast as I can and see if I can get back to you, cause I think they did ask that, that all participating members or voting members have on their ICIP.
Okay, if you could just give us the exact title, how it needs to be placed on there?
Let me, let me text Alex and see if he can answer back, thank you.
Remind me on the airport parking lot improvements?
It is to resurface the, um, parking lot. What we've done is used old millings, um, it's still not suitable for people dragging their luggage in and out. The drainage is poor, um, it pools with, um, storm runoff, um, we need better lighting and, um, some security cameras.
Well, you refresh my memory with the first things. And I know we have the, the CTE center on there too. You know, my only, my only question, I know that we have to approve this, what, Thursday? Because what did you say the deadline was?
Friday.
Friday. Uh, and I know two, two of our commissioners are busy, have they seen this and have they had any input on this?
This was emailed to, I believe, all of the board, and I haven't received any feedback.
Okay, so I need to know for, for Thursday, thank you. Anything else, Commissioners? Hold on real quick, though. Okay, I'm good.
I've got a couple of questions, so, uh, remind me about the, uh, HEAL Community Park improvements and then also the, uh, number nine, the Grant County Road Improvements.
The, um, the Cliff HEAL Community Park improvements, that is a combination. Now with the, the HEAL, the park next to the community center, as well as the new baseball, uh, field in Cliff. Uh, we decided to combine those two together, uh, and, and any funding, uh, will be prioritized between the need between those two parks.
Okay, thank you. And then number nine, the Grant County Road Improvements?
Um, at this point, the county wants to just list all of our, our road improvements into one item in the event that we get funding through any kind of DOT source, um, any of the capital outlet programs, uh, funding grants to, to improve our roadways, whether that just be any kind of major or maintenance, uh, items.
And this is an opportunity in addition to that, um, so those are funds that we receive each year through a separate application process. However, there are times that we might be looking for matching funds to go towards those, or we might have a specific project that, um, perhaps, um, we need more money for than we're going to qualify through TPF funding or, um, the LGRF program. And so, we've added that on there because we're identifying more and more, um, significant needs. Um, we've done nothing but band-aid our roads over time, and it's to the point where we're going to have to start doing some reconstruction. And we just can't keep slapping layers of Timsil over layers of Timsil, and, um, we're going to need some significant money, um, to go towards those. I think if you remember back, whenever we did the assessment of those, um, roadways many years ago, we had identified close to forty million dollars worth of improvements in our road network. And that was years ago, so you can probably close to double or triple that number, so that's the main reason that that's on there.
I'm, I'm personally glad to see it on there, yeah. Um, I think typically with seven hundred miles of roads, we've just kind of thought, well, we can't do what we need to do, so just give up on it. So, I'm glad to see that we're going to do something.
Thank you.
You know what thing I'd like to, to do, and, and I know we've, I don't even, while it has it here, funded to date, one point eight, one point eight million in Baton Park, and I know we still have some drainage issues and stuff. I know it can't be done by Thursday, I'd like to, maybe with Jason, where we're at, what we're doing, what projects are, are, uh, happening and, um, you know, sometimes I think with, with, we've been real lucky with what we have and, uh, what we've done there. Uh, you know, might take another look at all this and, and see what, what we really need, or if we can, uh, you know, put this a little further down and, uh, maybe later go for the CDBG grants instead. Um, but I, I don't really know, cause I know we've had so many projects, I know that, you know, one of the fields was getting re-turfed, uh, I don't know where we're at on that project. I don't know where we're at on the, on the, I believe it was the rocket toilets or whatever they're called, I don't know where we're at on that. But, uh, maybe it's time that we sit down, uh, sometime soon and, and look at this and, and reevaluate what, what we've done and what's important to have, uh, to do and, and go from there.
Thanks for your work on this.
Yes, sir. Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you, Randy. Uh, moving on to county reports, did you have anything else, uh, certainly?
Um, no, um, just whenever you finish up the directors, I just have one.
Okay. Uh, county reports, moving on to, uh, item H, Corde Camino's Quarterly Report, Ms. Kim, Kim Domius?
First Members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, just entering our last quarter of fiscal year twenty-four, we are projected to end the year at seventy-two thousand rides. This is a growth of approximately six thousand rides over last fiscal year. And we provided park and ride service for the rodeo last month and had a hundred and eighty-seven, or gave a hundred and eighty-seven rides over the, the two days. And most of our staff was able to complete the recent CPR training hosted by the county. There were a few of us that were unable to attend. We are working on getting our operations manager certified as a trainer to help take care of that for us, since it's difficult for us to get everybody off the bus and, and into, into trainings. In April, Amy and I attended the annual New Mexico Passenger Transit Association Annual Conference. And we were able to complete all of our required DOT trainings for the year at that conference while we were there. Um, I recently attended the DOT Budget Award Recommendation Meeting. Our overall ranking was fifth out of twenty-one sub-grantees. Our recommended award for fiscal year twenty-five is, um, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars for administration, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty for operations, and one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, fifty-nine dollars for capital for a bus purchase. The total awarded amount would be one million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine. Cash match amount on that is five hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. These are recommended amounts, we haven't received our official award letter, but it's usually exactly what was recommended by the, the DOT, um, review committee. So, we should be receiving our official award letter within the next couple of weeks. Um, I will be submitting our letter of intent to apply for our fiscal year twenty-six funding this week, and our grant application is due to DOT by August thirty-first for that grant. So, any questions, anything coming?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to your next, uh, report, be a DWI Quarterly Report, Daniel, Mr. Daniel Graves.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, just a quick update for our fourth quarter for this fiscal year. Uh, commissioners, uh, just a quick update for our fourth quarter for this fiscal year. Um, in our compliance section, we had thirty-five new clients, uh, that was thirty DWIs and five misdemeanors. That put us at a hundred and forty-five new clients for the fiscal year. Treatment, uh, we had five hundred and two hours completed. That put us just over two thousand, two hundred for the fiscal year for all of our clients. So, uh, the number of completed treatment hours. Uh, community service was at four eighteen for the quarter, and that put us over twenty-three hundred for the quarter. Our compliance level has been fairly well, uh, for this fiscal year. Uh, we did, however, have forty-nine repeat offenders with our program. I know that kind, kind of sounds shocking out of the hundred and forty-five, but that puts us at about a thirty-four percent recidivism rate, which is the, pretty much our standard level for about the last twenty years. Um, so we're staying right in line with our recidivism levels, even though we still, um, try to reduce that yearly. Our prevention, um, we expanded our prevention work in this, uh, fourth quarter by adding geofencing to our social media side. Uh, we've reached a, an agreement with Johnny Boards out of Albuquerque, and they've been working with our social media, uh, presence, and we've seen a steady increase from the end of April all the way through June. I attended, um, the June conference up in Las Vegas, and our affiliate spoke with the primary legislative, um, bills that were sent forward, um, Representative Ferrari and Representative Cadenha out of Las Cruces were the two bills that they pushed last year that were directly impacting the DWI funds. We spoke with them about our concerns. They gave us direction on their focus for this upcoming year. So we're trying to work together as an affiliate with those, uh, representatives to try and put together some type of bill that can move forward to not only help our program, but also help the, the alcohol harms alleviation act that they're trying to put forward for the alcohol tax funds. We had, um, several events that we attended throughout the community over this quarter. Uh, SAS Run, uh, two prom events that we did breathalyzers for. We worked out at Cliff with their track meet, um, with the, uh, Valerie, with the Prevention Day, Silver High School and Western for job events, and then also the Members' Event as well. Uh, financial, so we're not sending any money back this fiscal year. Um, this is the first time in probably about five years that we haven't sent any money back. Uh, we spent all of our distribution and all of our grant funding, so we're probably gonna be one of about six or seven counties in this, in the state that are sending no money back this year. And with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you.
Mister, uh, yeah, thank you. So what does treatment consist of? Can you give me, give us a brief on that?
So, um, we do DWIs and misdemeanors, so treatment can be anywhere from, um, domestic violence, anger management, parenting classes, but primarily it's substance use.
Okay. And the recidivism, uh, what happens to those forty-nine cases? Are they referred back to the courts or?
These are, are new cases that, um, have already been in our program before that are repeat, uh, entering in our, our facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so, do you, so do you have records from recidivism from, from like last year? Are these cycling through over and over again?
The, the database that we are currently using goes back to around the beginning of about two thousand, right at the start of two thousand. So, um, we have a good set of numbers, but it doesn't go back for the whole length of our program.
I just wonder how many are repeat, not just second time in, but third and fourth and so forth?
Yeah, it, um, I could get those numbers, but I don't have them offhand. I just know the, the fact that they've been in multiple times in our program.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to our next, uh, director's report, uh, the detention center, Mr. Andres Soler.
Morning Chairman Commissioners, uh, we currently have four officer openings at the detention center with one application going through the hiring process and two officers in training. We had one start, uh, yesterday. Accreditation update, as I told you, we had our PAR DMS introduction maybe a month or two ago. We do have our second meeting with PAR DMS this afternoon at twelve-thirty. We had to attend some training, learn how to use the system. So after today, the system will be open to start uploading our proofs. As I had discussed before, there's over two hundred proofs to upload. Within the next few weeks to the next month, I'll be making a plan of the accreditation and what our plan is to move forward. As I described in that PAR presentation, eighty percent of the accreditation process is uploading those proofs and then giving the accreditation inspectors access to those proofs to look. Uh, where before they'd come in for a week, week and a half at your facility. Now eighty percent of it's done through that PAR DMS, and then they come to the facility for a day and a half, and that's the accreditation process. So most of that bulk of the time is gonna be uploading those proofs and then having the inspectors look through those proofs. On June twenty-eighth, uh, population was eighty-five detainees, with an average daily population for June was eighty-six. As of Friday, June twenty-ninth, or twenty-eighth, we had zero COVID positives. We haven't had any in quite some time. Uh, in our rides program, in June, we had twenty-four rides participants with ten in the facility and fourteen in the community. We are currently working on a quarterly report that will be available to you next, commission meeting next month. And our projects, we did able to complete the access control system upgrade completed. The door sliders ran into a few, uh, problems there, so we gotta continue that. I think they're coming in either next week or the week after. Where we are able to complete that project for the cuff, cuff passes in the rec yard, so that is complete. We do have cuff, cuff passes in the record now. Now we're just looking at the laundry and then closing that mail unit for the security of the facility. As Dr. Isak mentioned, we're working with HMS on a grant for services in the facility that will augment the rides program within the facility and within our community office. Uh, portable building update, uh, the building is being built. Uh, the county does have the funds, I think we did appeal for a portion of the price. Uh, once it's completed, we'll pay another portion, and then upon delivery, we'll complete that payout for that building. Uh, key event dates, we do have, uh, agreement with Dona Anna to attend their special response team training at the end of this month, which is offered to us for free. And we'll continue to update our five, five-year plan for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and we'll pitch questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners.
Moving on to next, uh, is the emergency manager, uh, Mr. Scott Ford.
Good morning Chairman Commissioners, um, I'll tell it be brief, uh, going through my current projects. Uh, it has a mitigation plan revision. I'm currently working, uh, in conjunction with our contractor, H two, H two partners to get the plan updated. Uh, we've just finished up capabilities assessments part of it, and, uh, we're gonna have our second stakeholders meeting and public meeting. It says that July twenty-third is actually been moved to Thursday, July twenty-fifth. This, uh, the planning team meeting will consist of a hazard assessment process, and like I said, it'll be a second public meeting at six o'clock that night. On the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, I'm still awaiting the contract from the New Mexico Energy Minerals and Natural Resources, uh, Department to be sent to us, so we can finalize the funds for that. I'm currently working on finishing up the scope of work, uh, for the RFP. So once we get the contract from them, we can quickly move on and get the RFP out there and get a contractor awarded for that. Um, I finished up, uh, all the documents were sent to New Mexico Counties for the wildfire reduction grant with them. So we're free to use the funds that they were provided, uh, to us from them. Still, I should be getting, uh, applied for the, uh, FY twenty-four Emergency Management Performance Grant Funds, uh, all the documents were submitted for that. Should be getting an award notice sometime this week. It was supposed to have been around July first, but still waiting this week. And hopefully it'll be this week. And, uh, submitted the grant proposal for the two generators, uh, for the conference center, which is our emergency shelter in the U of C. That was submitted on the twentieth of June. Nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for two generators for those facilities, so. Thank God, most of it is federal money, so. And if you have any questions, I'll be willing to answer any of them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next report will come from our, uh, county fire chief. Chief Groves.
Good morning Chairman Commissioners. So in June, we did see an increase in some fire activity. We do not have the official stats from, uh, dispatch as of yet, but, uh, from my count, um, we had thirteen fires, reported fires. Three were man-caused, the other ten were lightning. Out of the man-caused, one was fireworks. We did get an increase of rain toward the last few days of the month, uh, that really gave us a good buffer leading into the holiday week. Um, our fire activity in the first week of July was pretty low, almost nothing. I think probably the first time ever, um, on the Fourth of July, there were no reported fires with any of our VFDs in the county. And just a couple of fires here in town a, after the fire, the town's firework display, so. That rain really did put us in a good spot for a few days. However, we're still in wildland season, we're not out of it. Things are drying out, the higher temperatures, we're getting back into some activity. Uh, the Forest Service has at least three, possibly five new starts, I believe, are in Catron County. That they're working, the last couple of days, we were seeing some smoke from that. Uh, another thing to report, I did get with, uh, Sky West Media and Sabrina Peck. We are working on some, uh, public service announcements. I did do one prior to the Fourth of July, uh, about the use of fireworks. We've, we've entered into the, uh, fiscal twenty-five grant. Eligibility time is open from July first through August thirty-first, and I encouraged all of our VFD chiefs to apply, preferably for structural-related needs, or bunker gear would be one, and, and, um, laundry equipment, washing equipment to wash, uh, the gear, extractors, or just washing machines. So I hope all of our chiefs are willing to put in this year for the grants, I think. Um, our two that were on probation, uh, worked very hard to, uh, follow the, uh, the plans that were set for them. And, uh, so Cliff is, uh, coming off of probation, and so will lower members. So they'll both be eligible for the grants as well. And, um, another key thing, it's not till August, but I did schedule, um, hazmat, uh, awareness and operations class. We were, we were given the class, it'll be in August. Uh, last time I checked, there were, it started with twenty-five seats and there were only nine left. So we're filling that class pretty quickly, and that's a prereq for just about everything else with the state fire training. So in, uh, in line with trying to improve our structural firefighting capabilities and our training, that's the first step, is getting that hazmat class. And we'll probably have to do a couple more, I think. But, uh, I'm really happy with the numbers that are signing up for it, so. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to our next report is, uh,
We're not voting, so you can go ahead, Ken.
I guess, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, go ahead. Next report from my IT Director, Mr. Baca.
Chairman Commissioners. Uh, regarding our current projects, we're currently working on installing redundant firewalls here in, uh, this building. And we'll be working on doing so over at the Detention, Detention Center as well, but we'll start here with that. We're also working on implementing a security information and event monitoring tool. This is a tool that allows us to collect all the alerts that can come from all of the systems that we have, um, desktops, laptops, servers, network switches, wireless access points. And that'll help us to be a little more, um, proactive on taking care of any events that may come up. We're also working on adding a couple surveillance cameras, a couple more over at Baton Park, and also over at our airport office. We'll be working on that in conjunction with, uh, with maintenance as well. We'll also be working here in the very immediate future on replacing some networking equipment in our server room here in the admin building. This will give us some greater capabilities, in particular with our server environment. And we're in the very beginnings of the implementation phase on our new IPRA reporting tool. So we're gonna start, uh, building that and, uh, having kickoff calls and, uh, getting routes and things like that aligned. As IPRA requests come our way, we'll make sure that we figure out exactly how to process those, uh, those requests. So for the most part, those are the projects that we have going on at the moment. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, doing a good job, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Moving on to our planning director, Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, for my report, under my current projects for Chrome Road and Brink's Road design, uh, that is in progress, uh, they will have environmental surveyors, uh, onsite doing fieldwork. So, uh, and any property owners out there, please be aware. Uh, the North Hurley Road face reconstruction, uh, we're set to have a pre-construction meeting, uh, to be held the week of July twenty-second, uh, to, to get that project off the ground. Uh, for the Baton Park Veterans Memorial Walking Path, uh, construction is in progress. The concrete forms for the path have been placed, and they're looking to do the concrete work here soon. The plumbing take road improvements were still on hold. Um, P and M has made some headway, uh, and we should hopefully have that utility pole moved, uh, and the seating done within the next couple of weeks. Uh, for the EDA grant, uh, the comprehensive plan update has begun. Uh, the contractor is working with, uh, on a public engagement strategy, uh, and a website for, uh, with an inactive map. Uh, within the next couple of months, they'll begin some stakeholder meetings, some public workshops, uh, pop-up meetings and some focus groups, as well as collecting GIS, uh, GIS data, uh, uh, for the, the plan. As that progresses, we'll, we'll give you a more, uh, a more detailed summary. The Old Jail Plaza project, that one, uh, is set to be, um, put on the books for the work to be completed. The Upper Members' Volunteer, uh, Fire Department Underground Water Source Tanks, that construction is in progress. And the contractor is set to, uh, mobilize and begin the main station first and then work towards the subs, work on the substation. The Southwest New Mexico Collaborative, they are still hold, uh, holding ongoing meetings for related outdoor recreation priorities uh, with government and non-government agencies. To date, they've met with the New Mexico Outdoor Recreation Department, the New Mexico State Forestry Division, the Town of Silver City, the Hila National Forest, and the Five Points Initiative. As those summaries, uh, are compiled, I will share that information with you all. Uh, under future projects, the courthouse improvements, design phase, um, we got noticed that the administrative, administrative office of the courts, um, did award our request for a design. Uh, the total project cost was seven hundred and fifty thousand, the amount requested was seven hundred and, three hundred and seventy-five, excuse me. Uh, they did increase the, a seven point five reserve for overruns in, uh, twenty-eight thousand, so the total requested approved. That should be coming to us, uh, through an agreement, will be four hundred and three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that will be for the design for either renovation, uh, in addition, or the new complex. So that design will, will get completed. For the other ones, Ridge Road, Reeds Valley, and Little Walnut, I will be hearing, uh, within the next couple of months, uh, whether those projects will be awarded through both New Mexico Department of Transportation funds and the colonialists funds. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, the ICIP is on the agenda for Thursday. I will make the revision to include the regional water project on it, and then, uh, you should have a final, a final draft on Thursday. And at this point, I stand for any questions.
The sidewalk, the path, uh, Baton, do you know when it'll be done?
Um, I'm hearing from the contractor that it should be done at, towards the end of this month or early in August.
Okay, and just that conversation we had, need to try to do a proper, uh, resolution, or all that. If you can keep me, I guess we can shoot for the first meeting in, uh, August, and I'll get you some writings for that. Thank you. Questions, Commissioner?
Commissioner Randy, we haven't had an update on the P A Fire Department station, the new one that we're supposed to build? Is that project still rolling forward?
Uh, to my understanding, that they had to re-release it for bid, the, the first bid, they didn't get any, uh, bidders, so they do have to rebid it.
Okay. I just haven't heard nothing in a while, so I was, I was curious about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Next report be the, uh, for the airport, uh, Ms. Rebecca.
Chairman, Commissioners, um, the U S D O T issued the request for proposal for the county's air service on June tenth. Interested airlines have until tomorrow to submit their proposals. We currently have seventeen Albuquerque flights and seven Phoenix flights weekly, but airlines are able to make different proposals, so. If we, they propose a larger aircraft, we would have less service. Um, they can propose different communities to fly to, so. Uh, we'll see what we get. I've actually had conversations with five different airlines, so, you know, that's actually been good. We've had Advanced, Boutique, of course, but Sky West, Denver Air Connect, and Southern Air have also contacted me. So it's been a lot of interest in our contract, so. We'll see what we get. We should have, uh, those proposals to us, excuse me, by the end of the week for reveal, so you'll, you'll be getting those too. Future projects, the F A A will be conducting our annual Part One Thirty-nine certification inspection at the end of this month, so July, July twenty-ninth through thirty-first. This is, uh, safety inspector comes in and they do an in-depth review of our airfield operations, the equipment on the airfield, our record-keeping, our R F program, readiness of our staff and our training. Do you have any questions?
Come. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners.
Just wanna add that, you are doing a great job out there. I was out there the other day, and it just looks, it's a whole different place out there.
It is.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So one, and I guess this will go to you, Charlene, but, so, the R F Ps need to ha, uh, come in July tenth. Does that mean in August we're voting, or we... For the, uh, airline service?
So what we do is you provide a letter to, um, Mr. Falk, and that's all that you do, um, is a letter of support.
Recommending one of the...
Yeah, it's technically not our contract to award. It's F A A's contract that they award, um, that they take into consideration your input of who you would like to see as the airline providing service.
Okay. Out of the R F Ps, right? We'll get to see all of them, and... Right? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, last time, it was, uh, there wasn't anything impressive to compete against Advanced Air, but, uh, maybe this time, who knows?
Thank you. Moving on to, uh, our fleet maintenance, Mr. Corey White.
Chairman, Commissioners, um, for June, we did fourteen oil change and inspections. Uh, we did thirty-three diagnosis and repairs. Uh, twelve tire repair or replacements. Um, Ford blades got new cutting edges, and we warranted one engine, uh, sheriff's unit. For July, we are prepping and installing fuel tanks and hitches on the new F one-fifties that arrived yesterday. We're looking into an off-road diesel fuel tank, uh, alarm upgrade on our fuel storage tank down under the road department. And then, I'm getting updated quotes for replacing two of our service trucks and one drive-on lift for the shop. And then, uh, we just continue moving, uh, older obsolete units through the auction. That's about it this month. Any questions?
You know, and I don't know if this goes to, to county manager and, and you, but it seems now that we're getting these reports, or maybe it's just 'cause we're getting the reports, but it seems like we're doing a lot of the oil changes and the repairs in-house now, saving money. Is that, is my assumption correct?
Yeah, we do most of the work in-house. If we're swamped for like a day or two and we have to, we'll send overflow oil changes here to In-N-Out Lou, primarily through the sheriff's department vehicles. Otherwise, it's all pretty much in-house.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that. And, uh, you know, I don't know what the manpower is, but it seems like they're, uh, they're getting more and more work.
Yeah.
That might be something we look at too, so.
Here we go.
And it does save money, but, you know, to keep up with it, sometimes it costs money to, to get you up to, to where you need to be.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to maintenance, Mr. Lockit.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, we have further use of the maintenance. Current projects, cleaning up the grounds at the old Aldo Building. Uh, removed three hundred and thirty, uh, yards, cubic yards of brush and trees with, uh, thirty-three yards of waste out of there, just kinda getting it in a semi-nice-looking fashion for when we get, um, an architect to come in there and look at it. Been busy with work tickets for hot areas and H vac units. We've had fourteen as of when this was reported. Um, we have like more than twenty now, so. We are still working on installing a two-hundred-feet of water lines at the road department for the evaporative coolers, for these mechanics and guys that are working in there, doing all the oil changes and things like that. Door slider replacements still currently happening at the jail, like, uh, Mr. Andazola reported. We are, um, had a few setbacks, but we'll be starting that up in the next week or two. Under future projects, still have laundry room washer upgrades, reconfigure at the detention center along with the mill unit. Uh, Baton Park, electrical service upgrades to pavilion vault toilets. Kinda chimed off what you were talking about earlier, Chairman. Um, ceiling tile replacement at Ace Hardware, manager's office breakroom remodel. Also, the Bark, Baton Park, uh, upper field turf replacement is complete. If you guys have a chance to go out there and look at it, it's very nice. We still have to do some, uh, red dirt on the outfield and things like that right now, waiting for the new fiscal year startup. But that turf out there has the nice spongy feel to it, like they should be when they're new. Has two French drains that were put in. One was underneath the field itself, and one was, um, a drainage issue to the, uh, south and east corner, and, uh, so all that, that, uh, French drains were put in, and it, they work very well after these recent rains that we've had. I'll stand for any questions for the maintenance side of it.
You know, earlier did make, uh, a comment about, you know, like, need to get, it's not a reflection on you, you could, you're doing a great job. I haven't had the time to see what we're at on these projects, especially when it's been on our I C I P list since I think I've been a commissioner. You're doing a great job. Has nothing to do with that. You're doing great. I'd just like to see what do we need to, you know, get your input, get Charlene's input on where we go with this, you know, what else we need to do, but we can sit down later, later time and go through that. But I appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
That'll work perfect. Thank you for your support.
Commissioners? Thank you.
Got it.
Uh, moving on to the road department.
Given that one as well. So I, uh, we did some research and got some things figured out, uh, Commissioner Medina's comments last time, for, uh, noon day project. So we're fifty percent complete out there. Uh, we've been, we've part of, we're gonna be parting a total of ninety-six yards of concrete for that low-water crossing, and, uh, so we got about half of that done right now, and then the rains hit, and so we are trying to, uh, we're cleaning up some flash flooding and things out there. Um, we'll be getting a more definitive look at what, uh, roads we will, the chip ceiling. Um, as of right now, on Ridge Road, Kirkland and, uh, Fleury Lane is gonna be set with our L G R F funds. Um, so we're still shouldering and doing those things and prepping for that for when the weather is right, that we can get those knocked out for this current year. We have a big tree on McCollum and Ballow Road that had blown over. Had to call out some staff, um, on a Saturday to get that removed. So I thank those guys for, uh, you know, coming in and doing those things. Like I was mentioning with the heavy rains, uh, Bear Creek up here in P A, we're fixing some things up there right now, um, today currently. Um, noonday, and then the San Lorenzo area, D Street area as well, we had to unplug some culverts and move some six-to-eight-foot, um, sandbars that have been washed in, um, and so we've been doing that and working on those. I would also like to, uh, thank the sheriff's department for providing deputies, uh, to enforce our parking lot being closed during the public display of fireworks, protecting our assets here. Um, they have three deputies that were here, and one had to leave, but, Mr. Ben Colman, Sheriff Illinois, we really appreciate them, uh, getting staff to cover that. Um, I'd also like to, uh, recognize some work anniversaries for the departments. Under the road department, we have Adam Arizaga for twenty-two years of service. We have Tommy Rios for nineteen years of service, Non-Temple Senior for thirteen years, Junior, Don Temple Junior for one year, and under the airport, we have Carlos Scrotto for nine years. I appreciate all of their hard work that they do to keep our facilities going and everything like that. So that concludes my report. I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And county manager?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our new finance director, Mr. Robert Palencio. I'm very excited to have him on board. Um, he brings a wealth of, um, knowledge and expertise, and he started with us on Monday. So, um, we're happy to have him, and I just wanna take this opportunity to introduce him to everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
So that concludes our director reports. Uh, county manager, she's all yours to review.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, right in front of you, you have the agenda for July eleventh. You have the normal, normal items on there, Hila Regional Medical Center report from Mr. Whitaker. Um, also the quarterly report from, uh, the Hila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees Chairman, Dr. Foot Fox. Uh, under presentations, Ruth Dearmeyer, uh, will be giving a presentation on the continuum of youth services that she provides. This used to be, um, known as the Juvenile Justice Program, and, um, so this is an annual presentation that she will provide to you. Um, you have three sets of minutes for you to review and approve. Next item, financial reports. Um, item F, uh, consideration of expenditure report dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. It's all Mr. Palencio is letting him off early, or, um, easy this go-around. Um, and hopefully in the future, you will have a little bit more robust, um, finance reports in addition to the expenditures. So in front of you, you have, um, for the period ending June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, accounts payable checks, um, totaling four million, eight hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. You have payroll checks from pay period twelve and thirteen totaling five hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents, for a total of five million, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. And also included in this packet is the checks, uh, over ten thousand. Have any questions?
Um, I don't. Do you guys?
No.
Um, thank you.
Moving on to new business, item G, consideration of new Whiskey Creek Fire Chief, Mr. Chuck Dietz. So it's the county's process for the commission to approve any new volunteer fire chiefs. And so Mr. Dietz is taking the place of Daniel Salis, which is, who has taken a job with the state fire marshals office. Uh, item H, consideration of appointment to the G R M C Board of Trustees. We have two, um, vacancies. Their terms expired at the end of June. Um, we received two applicants for those positions, Mr. Seth Traeger and Mr. Javier Salis. And it is, their terms that are expired, and those are the only two application, applications that we received. So we do need to make those appointments, so there's not, um, disruption in the board. Um, item I, consideration of fiscal year twenty-five asset deletion transfer request. Good morning, Commissioner, Mr. Chair. Uh, we have three vehicles that we are putting up for auction, two from the detention center and one from the road department. I stand for any questions.
Seems like we're finally getting a handle on, on all this, so thank you, Veronica. Appreciate that. Anything, Commissioner Zalna?
No, thanks.
Next, we move on to agreements. Item J, consideration of agreement A twenty-four, twenty-eight, contract between Grant County and San Juan County for housing of juvenile detainees. Uh, the contract that we have with San Juan County, um, is to house juvenile detainees. What we have is, um, you'll see in the title, is a non-guaranteed contract, and that is, we, if they have space available, um, we, um, can utilize that. And the bad part about this is the cost is going up to four hundred and fifty dollars per day, um, which is just basically covering their costs, and that's just the nature of, um, juvenile facilities. And unfortunately, we are down to only four facilities in the state, and we do have contracts with all four.
San Juan County, sorry, San Juan District's Farmington, right?
Yes.
And that's our sheriff's, sheriff's office transporting, correct?
Next, item K, consideration of agreement A twenty-four, twenty-nine. This is the approval of the fiscal year twenty-five Grant County continuum of youth services grant. This is a grant through C Y F D, term-of-life funding for, um, Mr. Meyer's program. Any questions on that?
Whose program?
Mr. Meyer's. The, the, I still call it juvenile justice. It's not that anymore, but...
Okay.
Um, resolutions. Item L, consideration of resolution R twenty-four, thirty-three. This is to adopt the infrastructure capital apartment plan for fiscal years twenty-six through thirty. And you heard that in Randy's report, um, we'll add, uh, the regional water project to that, and then, anything else you guys want to add, if you can get that to us, or if you wanna rearrange the order, whatever you wanna do. And that concludes your agenda for Thursday.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions on that? Thank you, county manager. Moving on to, uh, commissioner reports. Uh, Commissioner Billings, do you have a report?
Uh, not today, thank you.
Commissioner Medina?
Um, just wanna make the public aware, um, Summer Fest City Bear on the twentieth, uh, starts at nine a.m. to two p.m. Kids get backpacks and free school supplies and all kinds of goodies that we could get, uh, just to make the public aware, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I'm gonna, you know, I've been getting calls and, and, and questions on, on what's happening with, uh, Twenty-Nine Rodeo Road there in, uh, off of, uh, Rosedale area, and, uh, so I had, uh, so I'm just gonna go ahead and read this to try to keep the public informed, and, um, I'll read this again on Thursday, but, uh, here I go. "The county has received numerous requests for updates concerning the recent fire at Twenty-Nine Rodeo Road. Currently, county officials have been in contact with the state's environment department and hope to coordinate inspections of the property with that agency. Also, the county, in coordination with its public works and fire departments, is using a proactive measure on its rightaways to prevent any future damage that might occur. With respect to law enforcement, the county code department has issued citations and pursued further enforcement actions under the county's current solid waste and nuisance, nuisance ordinance. Finally, the county is reviewing legal remedies available to it in the, in the sixth judicial district if the property owner does not voluntarily comply with the existing ordinances. We will provide more updates, uh, to the public in the near future, so, um, you know, there are things that are happening. I know people wanna know what's going on. I appreciate, uh, uh, your concerns, but we are working on this, and, uh, as we continue, I think we'll give more updates and, and let the public know through our meetings, so thank you." Other than... You're welcome. Other than that... I have no further comments, so. On Thursday, again, it's, will be us three, so, I believe so. We'll do that. Anything else, county manager, commissioners, anything you have? No? Thank you. Call this meeting adjourned.